Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to this February 4th meeting of the Pitt County Board of Education. At this time, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Thank you so very much. At this time, if Ms. Counsel would please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Worth Forbes, if you would please lead us in the moment of silence.
Yeah, we need to remember all of our employees and also one of our board members, Mary Williams, has been in the hospital. And thoughts, prayers are with her. Cheryl Olmstead, who is Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, she lost her father recently. And we also want to remember Ralph Love, who's been on our board for over 20 years, that he will have a healthy and wonderful life ahead of him. And we also want to remember our students and all the issues that they have to deal with day in and day out, and the teachers as well as parents. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Forbes. At this time, we will have our recognitions. And the first area of recognition is to honor our outgoing board member, Mr. Ralph Love, Bishop Ralph Love, who has been a member of this board since January of 1992. Bishop Love represented District 1, Seat B, with distinction and with great character, and has been a great moral compass for this board for a great number of years. I think, on behalf of the Chair of this board, I thank Bishop Love for his service and all that he has done for the children and for the staff of Pitt County Schools and to his constituents. Bishop Love has become a great icon and a great leader in this county in terms of his work with the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to honor Bishop Love with a plaque on behalf of the Board of Education. Myself, as well as Vice Chairman of the Board, Mr. Worth Forbes, will join me in recognizing
Bishop, on behalf of the Pitt County Board of Education, a plaque is given to you in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to the students and staff of Pitt County Schools. The plaque reads, "In recognition and appreciation for outstanding and dedicated service to the students of Pitt County Schools as a member of the Pitt County Board of Education, presented on this day and in recognition of your service from January of 1992 until January of 2013." Bishop, I'm very pleased to have known you and to have worked with you. Thank you for your service to this board.
Thank you. And I also would like to say it's been a joy working with you. I've been an employee, and you and I have talked many times over the phone about issues. You are a man of your word, and you are an outstanding person, and you would be hard to replace. And God is very proud of you.
Also, as kind of an addition to this agenda, and I'm sure members of the board, I hope you will not object, to me recognizing another member, an outstanding contributor to our school system in terms of the countless hours of dedication, well-worded comments that she's been able to put for Pitt County Schools. But Heather Mayo, as members of this board know and others in this room perhaps, this will be her last board meeting. Today is her last day of service to our school system. And so certainly, if members of the board would like to comment on Ms. Mayo's work or any kind of comments to Ms. Mayo, if you do so at this time, and I think we'll start with Mr. Pedden.
I really have enjoyed Heather over the time I've been here. Also, she's from District 2, which, I mean, that's really a special plus for her. She lives north of the river. So I have really enjoyed her.
Ms. Caminits?
Heather and I have already communicated, and she knows how much I value her incredible contributions to Pitt County Schools. I don't know what we're going to do without her.
Definitely our loss, their gain. We're going to miss you. You're outstanding at what you do, and I know they're going to be definitely an asset to them. So we will miss you, definitely.
I've also communicated my feelings to Heather, and I will miss you also.
Heather, you and I have had some good times when I was working up here, and your table was a table that I could stand up on and jump when I was upset about something. And I enjoyed that, and you would sit back and laugh. But you're a wonderful person, and you did a great job. And like I said, you are a light in this system.
Well, we'll have to get you to tell us about Mr. Forbes dancing on top of the table.
There's a story there.
Ms. Superintendent, who can I?
I can't say any more words. I will say today, we said a little prayer, and then I sang the NC State Fight Song to Heather. So she's going to a good place, and we will miss her. But I'm really proud of her.
We won't tell Chancellor Ballard about you saying that State Fight Song. Ms. Owens?
And you're just a ray of sunshine, and I told you how to wear purple, remember?
Yeah.
Mr. Forrest?
Well, Heather, I think I'm the only one on this board that is going to say that I won't miss you, because we're going to continue to work together with the same organization, North Carolina State University. And I know your heart is with East Carolina, and I appreciate that. But North Carolina State University is going to be better off with Heather Mayo there, and we're looking forward to continued service with you at that place.
And of course, Ms. Counsel.
Okay, I'd just like to say again, congratulations, Heather, on your new role and your new position. Godspeed.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're honored to have present with us tonight Mayor Allen Thomas of Greenville, who we understand has a presentation tonight for us. Mayor Thomas, if you would come forward, please.
Actually, I do. And what an honor it is to be here with you all, ladies and gentlemen, this evening. Mr. Chairman and Dr. Emery, I want to thank you for having me. And on behalf of the City Council in Greenville, I extend greetings. And so many times, we get a chance to meet you out in the byways and highways across Pitt County and Greenville, but it's good to get a chance to be here and actually stand at this position and get a chance to present you with something good. So many times, people come before you with their hand out, and they're looking for money. They're looking for something. But I get the distinct honor and privilege to show up and actually give something back to the community. This past year, NASCAR conducted a competition called "The Race to Education." And what that was is every driver in NASCAR were matched with a mayor across the state of North Carolina. And two winners in NASCAR brought home a $20,000 check each back to their community. So one of those was Lexington. Good for them. Casey Kane brought them $20,000 back home to their location. The other was Greenville, North Carolina. And thanks to Jimmy Johnson winning his All-Star race in Charlotte, that's $20,000 that I'm able to present to you guys this evening. I might need some help. But this is on behalf of Charlotte Motor Speedway and NASCAR and Bruton Smith. They are presenting the Pitt County Schools, I guess they were getting the Greenville Schools, I'm not sure where that came from. But to you guys, $20,000 for your choice and your use, whatever you want to use here in the school system. And it was a real honor and privilege to be there representing Pitt County and Greenville. And I told Jimmy Johnson, I said, "Your skill and my good luck, that's a good combination." So, Mark, this is for you guys. And actually, you don't want that one. You can set that back down. You can't cash this one. I've already tried. This is the one you really want from Charlotte Motor Speedway and NASCAR, $20,000 to you guys. And I also want to say briefly that I have a five-month, well, six-month-old little boy, and a five-year-old little girl, and a seven-year-old little girl. And I've got a lot invested in this community and my heart. And I want to thank you for all you do, and I'm counting on you to help me get them educated and out the door. So God bless you and the hard work you do. We know how tough a job it is, and we're in the same position. We have to make decisions and move our community forward. And thank you for everything that you do. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's certainly a wonderful way to start a meeting off in terms of our recognitions, and certainly a contribution. We thank Mayor Thomas for presenting that tonight. At this time, under routine business adjustments to the agenda, are there any? We have a motion to approve the agenda. If so, let's vote on that.
So move.
Good. Thank you so much.
You know how it is.
The next section of the meeting is the public expression. Ms. Mayo, do we have any public expression this evening? Were there being none, we will move on to the next set, which is Section 7 of our agenda, which is consent items.
Move to approve.
And second.
Let's have a vote on that. Any discussion? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is new business with the Human Resources update. Mrs. Jackson.
Good evening. I have several items to present to you today. The first items that we'll be discussing is the calendar. And I sent you in the Word Packet a couple of months ago, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, excuse me, the proposed calendar that we had with an overview, and this is up for first reading today. We do have 180 days within this calendar, and as you will notice from what you saw previously, we were able to incorporate teacher workdays back into the calendar, as well as looking at a few system designated days. And we do have an unscheduled day, which is a day in which our 10-month employees do not come to work, but they are also not docked for pay, because by law, they can only work 215 days. If you count up the calendar, it comes to 216. So that is why you see the designated unscheduled day, so I did want to point that out. And at the bottom of the calendar, you see our proposed early release days. And within that, the committee did want to consider as well continuing our parent conference days, as you will see on the front of the calendar. And also, you'll see the designated days where we had, according to Policy 7.013, for teacher assistants that were not, will not be at work. We tried our best to make sure that we balance the calendar as much as possible between the two semesters. And you will note that our last day for the students would be on the 11th, which also allows two days before the weekend, if that is proposed graduation date, if that is what the committee so desires that works on that. So they'll give a little bit of time in between. So I am presenting this calendar to you today for first reading with the hopes that it will come before you for approval at the next meeting. And not to put any pressure on you, but we do have to create calendars, and we are going through a new system that's coming up soon with Power Schools. So we have a lot facing us, so the earlier we get the calendar done, the earlier our high schools and our middle schools will be able to complete the registration process.
Ms. Jackson, are there questions from members of the board? Ms. Caminits, I believe, had her hand first, and then followed by Mr. Forbes.
Delilah, how has this draft been shared with the community?
Has it been shared with the community? We have not put it out publicly because we had just one calendar, because of the dates that we had and the time constraints that we had.
No wiggle room, so.
There was really not a lot of wiggle room. It just may be moving one teacher workday to another spot, or removing one holiday to put it in another place. So there wasn't a lot of difference between the calendar with what we had.
Is it possible that it could be posted on the website, just so in the next couple weeks?
Oh, yes, we can do that.
People could comment, and that'd be great.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Mr. Forbes?
Easter.
Yes, sir.
And then the Friday before, Good Friday.
Correct.
And that is a what, early?
That is a holiday.
That's a holiday.
That is a holiday.
That is a holiday.
Because we're designated by the state personnel calendar to have a certain number of holidays, and.
I just think that was important to bring out that Good Friday is a holiday.
It is.
Yes, yes.
The other comment, the question that I would have.
Yes, sir.
Does this take into account the 185 days, or does this take into account accomplishing the hour requirement?
We are accomplishing the hour requirement. It's 1,025 hours. And we have worked with the committee to make sure that each school is within their allotted hours, taking away early release and different things such as assemblies. So most of our schools were well over that number.
Well over, very good. Any further questions, comments? Were there being none? Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
All right, and we will talk about putting that on the web. And I think I'm the next part of the update as well. And the Human Resources Committee met on January 22nd. Ms. Barbara Owens was our Vice Chair at that point, leading that meeting. We discussed several items, and one of the items that we discussed was the follow-up to Policy 7.206, which has been a policy we've been working on for the last six months. And we presented the policy to the board, to the Human Resources Committee, with proposed changes that expanded the procedure, as well as put a little bit more language into the policy of the positive, and also emphasizing on communication, and how we need to make sure that employees knew what we've given, and also changing the job descriptions to match what they do, and changing the evaluations to match the job descriptions. Because one thing that we realized is we have one blanket evaluation system for all our classified staff. And that was not working for some areas. And with that, we created different evaluations that had the basics for everyone as far as putting in the knowledge of their job, general habits such as rapport with the personnel that they work with. And last, what we're doing, if you're a custodian, for example, you would have specific job duties in your evaluation that dealt with just custodial duties. If you were a bookkeeper, if you are a bookkeeper, you would have specific job descriptions in there, elements for your evaluation that dealt with bookkeeping. We feel like this is a great move, had a great meeting with our principals, the committee, and we also brought a focus group together of our employees of the year for classified. They reviewed this document, so we had a lot of good feedback. We've been working on it for about three months. And so we're prepared, and it was voted on by the committee, to pass it on to the policy committee. So I look forward to that coming forth to you in the next month or so. Also, we talked about teacher recruitment. We are getting to that point in time of year. We do have some changes to the process. In teacher recruitment, we are narrowing down our list, but Mr. Buck, who is my Personnel Director, myself, or Ms. Sandra Morris, who's going to be working with our Title I schools, which we have 22 of them, one of the three of us will go on every recruitment trip. And for schools that are hard to fill, we ask everybody to pick their top three choices, and we try to be very selective. So those people that arrive to those job fairs will have specific things to try to help sell their school, especially our high-need positions and our hard-to-fill schools. In that conversation also came the conversation about supplements. And that is something that we want to revisit with a future meeting jointly with the Finance Committee. And that, a lot of information has come out from the supplement issue. I received emails as latest Friday about the lack of supplement and how it's affecting different teachers in the district. And also, Mr. Buck went on a job recruitment fair in November, and they had a change to the process and allowed everyone to come up and speak about their district. He was the only district that didn't have anything to offer, but we were halfway between Raleigh and the beach, that's what he said. And we have ECU, where most of them were talking about the financial things and incentives that they have for their district. So it is something that I would like to, and the committee has suggested, for further visit in the future. Next, we talked about open contracts. And with the open contracts, we do have ability to do that. Last year, you granted us the ability to have seven open contracts for exceptional children. We filled every single one of them. And then 10 days later, we had six or seven people to leave, so that left us with more positions. But what we did worked, because we were able to recruit seven very good first-year and various teachers with open contracts. So we do want to revisit that with the criteria, a set of guidelines, not that everybody can just have an open contract. We need to look at turnover rate. We need to look at the high-need positions, such as EC, our math and science positions in our middle schools and high schools, any of the positions that we have records and documentation about being hard to fill. We want to be able to offer and have our principals the ability to offer open contracts, but not just free will. There will be some stipulations and guidelines. And lastly, we talked about the cyberbullying legislation, and that was just a revision to add in the criteria about online, because a lot of things are coming online where people are creating false websites and things that are damaging other people. So there is a tighter legislation regarding that as well. And that ends my version of the HR Committee report. So I'll defer to Ms. Owens if there's anything that you'd like to add at this time.
That covers it completely. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions from members of the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank you for your work in that area, particularly with looking at supplements and those types of things. It's very important in terms of making sure that we're attracting the best and brightest that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda is the Operations Committee report, and to present that in combination with Mr. Forbes is Mr. Aaron Bowyer.
The Operations Committee met on January 28th, and we met at the Facility Services. And we went over a number of items, and one of those items that we dealt with was safety. And we're going to have a small presentation tonight regarding some of the, I thought, were great ideas for safety at our high school level and our middle school and K-8 schools.
Aaron?
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Forbes. Yes, with us tonight, I have a few more items that'll come up after the presentation on safety and security. But with us tonight, we have three individuals from our Facility Service Department, Mr. Russell Warren, who's a Section Coordinator, Mike Whitford, who's our Safety Coordinator, and Jeff Hudson, who's our Supervisor over Low Voltage Electrical. We are very blessed in this district to have very good people leading our facilities. These people within their own abilities, means, resources, have gone forward with these initiatives to bring forward what we feel is some great measures in the area of safety and security. Katie came out last Friday, met us at Facility Services, got an onsite review. We've gotten nothing but good feedback from where we're going, but this is just the tip of the iceberg. This is just the start of us looking at and continuing to take all the different mindsets. Dr. Poki Nolan's very involved in this process. But with that, I'd like to have Mr. Hudson come up, do a brief overview of what he shared with the committee at that time, and then we'll answer any questions, and then I'll go through the rest of the agenda items. I'll listen to Mr. Jeff Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. What we got is a short PowerPoint discussing issues around safety dealing with, basically, we've purchased a 40-inch screen to put into receptionist dispatcher area that's our central core in our office. And in this monitor, we have got Teligis, which is our fleet GPS software, and I'm going to go into individual, what it can do and can't do. We got Digiop camera server, which we do all recordings for schools. Also, we have access to our S-drives, which maintain the drawings and actually the room numbers. We can get down to any, focused on any point. Also, we have instant weather alerts. Like Aaron said, this monitor has many different potentialities to go forward. We just got this all packaged together in a short period of time, but some of these items have been in service for at least a couple of years, and we decided to throw them into a central package. With that being said, I'm going to go right into my PowerPoint. Uh-oh. Okay, excuse me. First, we're going to talk about our GPS system. It's Teligis Fleet. Currently, it can do, we have 37 trucks on fleet. Also, child nutrition has come around to the table and added a few vans in their circulation here. But what we can do is productivity tracking. As you can see, we got a map of our district with the purple balloons or blue balloons being actually the schools, okay? In that description there, the trucks are clustered in clusters of three or two, or you got an error where one is moving forward. We can zoom right in on that and tell you where our staff is at any live moment. With that being said, we go to our next slide and actually zoom in on Pac-Tola School. With this slide, we see that we have two trucks there, Dante Barrett and Philip Leighton. They've been there for 21 minutes. So we can actually tell under emergency situation, who's on the grounds of that school, where are they at? You know, in a case of a lockdown, we may want to get our crew out of that place, okay? Or we may have them in the building, so we may need to contact them to tell them that we're in a lockdown procedure for notification to protect staff. Next, we just zoom in through Google Map, and we can actually see the location of the truck on the facility. It gives us pinpoint accuracy with latitude, longitude. Also, we can do immediate response. If we had an emergency, a hazard at a school that had smoke-related, fire, water, electrical, sewer, whatever hazard it may be, we can ping into the school, actually do a find the nearest vehicle, and it generates us a list. And at that point, we can dispatch the closest truck. In this situation, Mike Johnson is 4.2 miles away. Before, we just picked up the phone, we call somebody, they'll all be on the other side of the county. So for first responder, we need to get somebody there immediately. This system is very helpful in that aspect. Next, another piece of the GPS is it does automatic tracking for maintenance. Here, we selected a truck 7011. We showed a fuel log, actually to change the oil. So actually, we're changing the oil and keeping up with our trucks to try to save funds for having to replace with a truck. So we're tackling that maintenance portion with that piece. Next is the camera Digiop system that we have in place. Have spoke with senior staff, have spoke with different principals in the area, and had real good reactions on our Digiop software, what its capabilities are. First, we have a list here of schools that currently have camera servers in the school. And at any moment, we can zoom in on any school and see the camera server and the cameras live view within our office area immediately. Here's just a quick shot of, I think this is Gerald Whitfield, Griffin Middle School. Here's a view of what we can see as far as looking live. Next, we can do clustering. We have here, we have DH Connolly Vikings Gym, two sections of the gym. Also, here's four shots of the gym. We got the practice gym, okay? All that can be clustered in a group for grouping. Here, we have grouped in a group all the offices. I have every office in the county. There are not actually all of them, because I had to dissipate my picture to get it into PowerPoint, so there's more offices, areas. But we can just play any match game and grouping game we want to try to get real access immediately for the school system. Next, we have some exterior parking areas there. We're monitoring school bus parking, rear parking, just different areas in the parking. Next is the front door entrance. We've got a couple of shots here of some schools with the front door entrance ways that we are monitoring. Next is a actual picture of an IP camera versus an analog. Currently, our systems are analog systems. They're standalone systems. That means it does not require internet to be active for it to be recording. It's a standalone system. It's actually got a battery backup system built into it. We get two hours worth of recording with no power, okay, with a camera server. But this IP-type camera is the one that we're talking about, putting at the front entrance of the school when we do camera systems for clarity, to understand who comes in and out of that building to give that clarity to us. Here, we're doing a search routine at one school. We're able to search the history up to three months on our. We can see anything that we want to see. Here, the cafeteria program. Our child nutrition group has stepped into the program, and now we're installing camera systems in the cafeteria. We're watching serving lines, we're watching dry storage, we're watching cash registers, we're watching entrance ways, exits ways in the cafeteria. This is just something that we decided to do as the district, and it's being rolled out now in all our high schools. And I guess we're going to continue each year to do a little bit more. That's it with the camera servers. Next is the S-drive, which is kind of self-explanatory. We go through here, we just got a menu where all our schools are available. We can actually zoom in on a drawing or a full plan, bring it up and say, hey, we're in room 312. So that gives us the capability, if we were to get a phone call in a lockdown, and we were called, Facility Service was called, we could dispatch the cameras for that school. At the same time, we could be monitoring that school. If there was a need to, for us to intervene to say, hey, we seen so-and-so happen at rooms 312. We could have that footprint already ready to figure out what we need to tell somebody to try to help the school district. There's a lot of procedures here that can be worked along these tools and be utilized throughout the county. Now, I guess one fine point would be, if something happens at the school, the tools are not being used because the school is in a crisis. When the school's in a crisis, everybody's got another job to do. Well, Facility Service is not in a crisis. The person in the office is, is easy mindset person, is not involved with the crisis. So this information can be shared with any number of people for different reasons, because that person is not involved with, with the crisis. And that's kind of why we're throwing this together here to say, look, in a crisis time, Facility Services need to be involved with some of the decision makers around safety because of the tools that are available, okay? With that said, we're going to go in on to our security system. We have now got 41 sites that we have the same security system. These are just our different accounts throughout. It's a GE network. It's all accessible by the internet. As far as maintenance purposes, we can enter codes and keep up with codes, DIA the office area, instead of having to travel from school to school to enter codes. Also, we can do maintenance reporting. We do automatic opening and closings for the principals. So a principal could be at the Golden Corral, eating supper at 9:30, head could leave custodian at night, closes that school, she gets an email on the side, hey, my school just went into lock, lockdown because my custodian is finished for tonight. So she knows, or they know, when their school's open and closed. Secondly, if you get an alarm, the principal also gets an email on that. So when we go into alarm reporting, they know what's going on with their school building. DIA email. Here, we got event reporting. We can pull up any account. We can tell you when it was opened and closed. We can also tell you here that we had a closing and an alarm and then an opening all within the same minute, so it's evident that this was operator error. So we have the options to define whether it was operator error or was an actual alarm. Plus, if we add the cameras to the timeframe, we might be able to go in and get some prints off of it. Also, we have instant weather. Here, we have an alert here for this day. It was a wind advisory tool five. So we, we got this rolling all the time in the office area in this monitor. It's a multi-function monitor. Its expandability is yet to be determined because we're in the growth period here. Just wanted to share this information with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Those three gentlemen are glad to answer any questions. Jeff did a very quick overview. We sped a little more detail. But what I'd like to basically summarize is we've got everything an ADT or a security system would have for someone's home. We're able to access from a remote point, and I think some of you may have been a little confused when Mr. Hudson was talking about, but what we're trying to establish with that monitor board located in our Facility Services Office with our switchboard operator is a place that when something happens in a school, part of the process will be for them to coordinate watching, monitoring, loading the maps that show the locations of the school from a remote access. Because we all know, we don't want to deal with any horrific type situation, but the sense in a school is probably not going to be that someone can stop and watch their 64 cameras. You're going to need someone probably from a remote access that can be on the phone with law enforcement saying, hey, we're monitoring all six of our exterior camp, campus, cameras. We've seen the gentleman move from the back of the campus around to the bus lot, or he's in Hall 300 and he's moving to Hall 200. You know, as we progress, and we're, I think Dr. Emery's going to share with you that we're forming a task force, we're bringing the law enforcement in. We've already uploaded on all the law enforcement's laptops in their cars, the site maps of all of our schools. Because when law enforcement shows up in a high school's 250,000 square feet, they don't know where room 302 is. They don't know where Hall 200 is. So again, this is all in its infancy, but these gentlemen have taken great steps that with some of the expertise from within and when with working with law enforcement, we really think we're going to be able to show the community some great initiatives have gone on to get us to a point that hopefully we can minimize and lessen the impact of any tragic situation should it ever happen. And even though right now, foremost, everyone's mind is a shooting incident, some of these gentlemen that have been in schools know that a sewer leak, a gas leak, fire, some of those things are just as horrific that we would ever have to monitor. Those are things that all have to be worked into our safety and security packages. So we know who's coming and going. We can track weather situations. When schools are working in tornado drills, someone from a remote access can be contacting school X, hey, it's coming your way, get down. We don't want schools watching the TV. We don't want schools trying to get online themselves. They've got other duties and responsibilities. So as we expand this dispatch area, right now, it's currently monitored from 7:00 to 3:30. The one dilemma Mr. Hudson didn't share is right now, we're only fortunate to have it in our high schools, middle schools, and K-8s. We don't have it in our elementary schools. So as we progress with our priorities, those things will have to be considered with resources as we move forward.
Yeah, we did discuss some creative ways that we can get this into our elementary schools.
That's correct. Very good. Any questions about that?
Very good. Thank you.
Just progressing through the rest of the agenda, we did entertain with the committee a company that's interested in placing a cell tower on one of our campuses. They asked us to go back, negotiate with that company, work out the financial terms, and come back to the committee. We gave an update on the bus garage. We currently have no active offer on that site. It was believed that we would have one sometime shortly after the first year. We don't have that. We've contacted the person that was potentially interested, have not heard back. But in the meantime, the board did approve at its December meeting, the ability to go forward with some additional testing on that site. I am very, very proud to say that, again, through some hard work of our Facility Service, we have cleared that site of all environmental issues. We are asking proceeding with the state for no further action notice that would give us basically a clean bill of health on that site. When you've had buses parked on a site as long as we have, to have clean environmental records for a sale of a property if it was to come about, that's a tremendous accomplishment, again, for that group. We also updated our textbook warehouse that was located at Third Street. We are temporarily renting space from the owner of the Third Street property, but talked to the committee about possible options for the future, but just keeping that on everyone's radar. We gave an update on the Chicago Sewer. We have had some issues with the contractor of that sewer project. They are back working on that project, and the completion date of that project is April 17th. So we hope to continue. You've probably seen a lot of work along 43, a lot of clearing, a lot of pipe being laid, a lot of driveways being disturbed. But we've been working very closely with DOT and the different agencies, and we feel like they're meeting our requirements.
But every day that there are, that is after that April date, they are fined.
Right. There's liquidated damages of $750 per day.
Per day.
Seventeen.
Correct.
We also updated the board, and we have a lot of fluctuation a lot of times in budget amounts versus actual. But we were very fortunate to take advantage of some of these economic times, and the bleachers that were to be installed at Aiden, Griffin, and Farmville have been bid. They will be installed as soon as the season's over. Those came in at $85,000 under the proposed amount of 416. It was the wishes of the committee that we take those additional resources and allocate them possibly in combination of some other funds to possibly cameras or safety and security initiatives as we move forward. And the last item that was updated was just, again, it's never a good time when there's economic issues, but it's been a number of years. We've completed all the projects that were part of the 2009 Long Range Facility Plan. It's time that we update at least our next Long Range Facility Plan. We look at our needs, we address our needs, we let the public know what our needs are as far as construction, deferred maintenance, renovations, and additions. So at least we have that out there in the public. Glad there are any questions. Appreciate everyone's attention to the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Finance Committee report in combination with Mr. Forrest and Mr. Cowan.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we met on Thursday, January 31st, 5 o'clock. We did have a warm, Mr. Chairman, for the first half of our meeting, so we made sure that we took care of all the needed business to take care of at that time. And in that business was the proposed budget amendment, which I'm going to let Michael explain, and the audit report, and then after which, we'll, I'll make a motion that we approve that budget amendment, okay? Michael.
Thank you. Good evening. As Benji just stated, the item on the agenda first was the review of our audit report, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, AKA Audit, for the 2011-12 fiscal year. We had Michael Jordan, who is the partner and lead auditor with Pitt, Perry, and Crone, with us in attendance to review the CAFR, the Audit Report, for Pitt County Schools and the Board of Education. In summary, I'd like to go through a few of the highlights of that audit. The board did receive two financial awards. The Government Finance Officers Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the Association of School Business Official Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting as well. This is the 11th straight year that the board has received both of these very, very prestigious financial awards. We also received through the audit process an unqualified audit opinion, which is the best audit opinion that can be rendered by an external auditor. The audit also included no material weaknesses that were identified in the internal control structure, no significant deficiencies were identified as well. And we were also considered to be a low-risk audity based off of our financial performance and reporting and the internal control structure that we currently have here at Pitt County Schools. In summary, this audit represents an outstanding honor for the Board of Education and is a testament to the high expectations that the board has established with concerns to the financial reporting and accountability within the school system. In the words of Michael Jordan, our, our lead auditor, again, partner with Pitt, Perry, and Crone, this was a real slam dunk for Pitt County Schools.
There you go.
Moving on to Budget Amendment Number One for the 2011-12 fiscal year, the budget for Pitt County Schools stands at approximately $223.6 million, with state appropriations through the State Public School Fund making up approximately 56.5% of that total, $126.4 million. Local accounts for approximately 17% of the total coming at 38.7. This budget amendment does not include any adjustments to the local fund, no increases nor decreases. And the federal fund makes up an additional 12% of the overall $223.6 million. Over 73 out of every $100 of this budget per Budget Amendment Number One goes directly into the classroom with concerns to teacher salaries, teacher assistant salaries, instructional supplies, and equipment, and so on, technology. That is really no different from any other budget amendment that we see consistently throughout the fiscal year. If I look at the highlights of, of this budget, the, the one highlight is an increase in our transportation allotment. The Department of Public Instruction basically allot to Pitt County Schools and all school systems in the second half of the year, the remaining portion of the, the transportation allotment. Once we have a couple of months of, of service in place to address and to record the number of miles driven, the number of buses in operation, and the number of riders that we have on a daily basis, that accounts for $1.2 million increase. And I'm expecting about another $100,000 worth of fuel allotments to, to take into consideration the increased cost of diesel fuel that should be coming along in the next several weeks. Also includes an increase for Medicaid billing. Pitt County Schools has already received, based of the efforts of our Exceptional Children's Program, to, to bill for special need therapies, over $500,000 in additional revenue to support the EC program, which again is a testament to that, to that program. Those dollars will be used clearly to go back into the EC program and fund curriculum supplies for the exceptional children's students. We also had $230,000 worth of Race to the Top incentives included in this budget amendment, which went to three of our most at need, highest need schools, and provide a little bit of economic stimulus back to those schools in, in the form of bonuses during the holiday season. So again, that was very beneficial to those employees. In total, $223.6 million. This is really the biggest budget amendment that we will see for this fiscal year, this school year. From this point forward, we just see minor tweaks basically to the, the federal appropriations as they come along, no major anticipated additions to the budget.
Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the proposed Budget Amendment Number One as presented.
But a motion made. Is there?
Second.
A second? A second from Mr. Pedden. Is there any discussion? If not, a spoke. She unanimous? Thank you very much, Mr. Cowan. At this time, in the next section, we would have a policy update. Mr. Kenny was to present that. Do you have anyone that will present that on his behalf?
If it's the dress code, I'd be happy to.
Ms. Waters, would you go through each one of those sections from page 38 to page 40?
We had a task force made up of people from the community, representatives from staff, and students who met about five times to talk about the dress code and what they would like to see happen as opposed to as the policy, as it was written. The first item of discussion was the use of jeans within a school to reward positive behavior or for fundraising. And while the board had wanted to move closer to no jeans at all, the committee recommended that it be limited to once a month or nine times a year. It varied greatly according to the statistics that we had gotten the previous year. If you're going to reward a positive behavior by marking period, the high schools would do four. It's possible that the K-5 or K-8 schools could do that six times a year. And then they have fundraising, and it isn't necessarily fundraising for charity, but perhaps if the children wanted to pay a dollar so that they could wear jeans, the money raised would go towards a project that was taking place within the school and would ultimately benefit all students. So students aren't penalized if they don't have the dollar, but they are, they are part of the group that benefits from such fundraising. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and we decided that each school should be given the opportunity to do that at their discretion. And the specific reasons must be to reward positive behavior or fundraising for a cause that benefits all the students at the school. Then when it came to pants, the committee decided to ban all denim pants regardless of color. So it isn't just blue jeans, it would be black jeans or any other denim jeans. So it isn't just blue jeans, it would be black jeans or any other denim jeans. There was no change in the shirt tucking requirement. If it's longer than three inches and it's meant to be tucked in, it should be tucked in. Item A, lightweight fleece jackets that do not have a hood should be allowed, provided they're within the color scheme. But we did prohibit the wearing of denim vests or jackets. Under miscellaneous items, the committee decided that no jeggings should be allowed. Jeggings are tights that have no feet, and while they do have a proper place, we did not think they belonged in the school. Footed tights and leggings were to be allowed under a regulation-length dress or skirt, in other words, not to be worn as pants. Camisoles are to be added to a paragraph, existing paragraph. Undergarments may not be visible at any time, however, students may wear T-shirts such as camisoles under collared shirts which are plain white, black, navy, or one of the additional designated school colors. And the color chart is available. And then there were just a few, a few schools, a few schools asked to add colors. If they had a feeder school going into a high school, they asked that, for example, D.H. Conley and G.R. Whitfield want to add gray to their colors because evidently gray is an acceptable color at G.R. Whitfield, and they felt that the students then could utilize the uniforms going into high school if they still fit, if they added gray as a color. And I believe that was offered to other feeder schools also. And those are the recommendations, those are not all the recommendations, those are the ones that passed the Policy Committee. And so they're coming to you in this package.
Is there any discussion on this in terms of the Policy Committee's recommendation from the Uniform Task Force?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would like to ask, Chris, when y'all discussed this, one of the big things that I had from constituents and all was the shirt tails being treated the same with the boys and the girls.
I relate. And we discussed it, and I think they felt that the girls' shirts were not designed to be tucked in. The boys are designed to be tucked in unless they want to wear a bandage shirt that's meant to, you know, be worn out.
Does this reflect, I mean, what does this reflect? Does this reflect that?
The policy stays.
In place.
I think the policy stays exactly as it is.
Ms. Carter, was that, she said it was no problem?
Yes.
She did say it was no problem?
She said it was no problem.
Okay.
I mean, there's always a problem if they tuck them in, and if they're told to tuck them in, they walk around the corner and untuck them, there's always that problem. But enforcement is the problem.
Okay, well, I feel good about it then.
We did have principals and assistant principals from all the levels.
Ms. Camnitz?
So just for clarity, Chris, though, I assume if, since we're not voicing any objection, the next step is going to be that these will be incorporated into the actual policy, and that'll be brought to us for first reading since it's?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
They'll have to come back in policy format for first reading.
Do we need to vote on the color changes tonight for Conley and Whitfield?
Again, my understanding on this is it's a draft, not yet in first reading, but the second reading obviously would come, and then we would vote on those.
And we would do the color changes then too?
Yes.
Okay.
We have also, at the Policy Committee's direction, contacted all the schools that only had four colors. We did look to see, because the policy says schools can have five, and we have notified them to see if they, coming forward, would like to add that fifth color. Conley's thinking was they looked at all the colors of their feeder schools, and they wanted to add that fifth color that was in common with their feeder schools, and that's the suggestion we're making to these other schools too. So you may have additional schools added to this list when it comes back to you.
Any further questions? The next issue that was on that agenda was Policy 7.126, which was dealing with disability salary continuation. Dr. Emery, if you'd like to update us on that.
This is just a policy that the language is covered in another policy, and Sonya Huntley, our workers' comp person, felt this was just repetitive because it is covered in other policy and just recommended that we delete it.
Is this specifically being asked for action tonight regarding?
I think if you treat it as a first reading, then it would come back to formal action as a second reading.
Are there any questions or concerns regarding the deletion of Policy 7.126, which deals with disability salary continuation? All right, thank you very much. Our next issue on the agenda is the update on focus groups for athletic eligibility and policy revision, and Dr. Emery, you will update us on that.
Yes, thank you. We shared with the Board Policy Committee the proposed revisions to our athletic eligibility policies and procedures, and received their blessing to, as we shared with you earlier, take those out and have some discussion in a focus group format. We had scheduled last week five of our six high school focus groups, and due to the early release date to weather the Friday before, two of them had to reschedule because they had to reschedule basketball games. So we have been able to meet with the Rose, Conley, and Farmville Central Focus Groups. Those were very good and productive conversations, good feedback to bring back to the Policy Committee. When we get the other three finished next week, then we'll bring back their thoughts. But I know the Policy Committee wanted us to get feedback from those groups. We've had really good turnout in the three high schools, parents, booster club members, coaches, A.D., and student athletes involved in those discussions. So very helpful, and some good suggestions from them about things that we hadn't thought about, which is the whole purpose in getting out and having the conversation. So we look forward to bringing those back to the Policy Committee.
All right, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda involves our attorney, Mr. Ken Su. Mr. Su, if you would come forward, please, and update us on some issues or questions Board members may have regarding the next item on the agenda, which is Board Discussion Regarding a Potential Revision to Board Policy Regarding the Vacancy Procedures For Filling the Position on the Board.
Good evening, Board Members. This arises because the last couple of times you filled the vacancy, you haven't followed the strict requirements of the appendix, and that's 1301, the appendix that's numbered 1301. And the language in that dates back really to the origin of the Unified Board, where you had, where the Seat A and Seat B had a tangible meaning in that, I think it was Seat A served a longer term than Seat B so that ultimately the Board would have staggered terms. And there were some, that policy hadn't been followed in recent memory, so I put together a proposed revision, I'm sorry, I keep calling it a policy, it's an appendix, that is in your packet at page 42, just for discussion if the Board wanted to talk about permanently changing its policy. You do not have to do that, you could either follow the appendix and have the committee consist only of, I guess it's Seat B members, I'm not sure which Bishop Love occupied, in any event, A, thank you.
B.
Seat B.
Well, if you do that, we'd want to get that one straight.
No, it's B.
And then you could do that, you could suspend it just for this one time, or you could change your policy if you think that's the way you want to go in the future. This policy recommendation, which is really just for discussion, gives the Chair the option of either appointing a committee, not necessarily from either A or B, or not doing so, and if there's not a committee, it would be the full Board. And this is really an option, because I don't know whether you, as a Board, prefer just having the Board as a whole make these decisions and handle the process, or whether you'd rather have a committee go through the interviewing process on the assumption that there'll be a lot of applicants to interview. But I think it's fairly straightforward. As I say, the way it's written now, it gives the Chair the option. If the Chair doesn't designate a committee, then the full Board goes ahead with the process that was originally laid out for committee. I removed the statement in Paragraph Eight where it says that the Board Committee will deliberate and determine by consensus, because sometimes you can't reach consensus, and it just should be majority. Basically, I don't want a committee deadlocked because they can't get everybody to agree on one person. And then I didn't, nine I took out, and in looking back at it, I may not have understood what the intent was, but to the degree that it suggested that the committee was going to make some deliberation that would be in private, the committee can't do that, the Board can't do that when it comes to selecting a new Board member.
Thank you, Mr. Su. With that, I would entertain a motion whether or not the Board would want to change our bylaws, or whether or not we would want to just simply amend it for this particular occasion. Is there discussion? Ms. Camnitz?
I would advocate that we just move towards having the full Board deliberate and decide, since the full Board is going to vote on it eventually anyway. To me, I would rather be involved in the interview process and have everyone involved in the interview process.
Okay, Mr. Forbes?
And I would also agree with that, that we just change our bylaws.
To full Board.
To the full Board.
Any further? Do we have that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion that we change our bylaws regarding appointments to the new Board members to include the full Board.
And since it's a potential policy and a rule of procedure change, you'd want specific language, and one way to do that would be to strike everything in Paragraph One up to the point where it says, "Board," and just begin, "the Board will fill the vacancy by following the process outlined below."
Right.
And then strike the word "or committee" wherever "or committee" appears. And then Paragraph Eight, let's see, would probably need to be replaced by?
Candidate selected.
It just wouldn't, we could drop number eight.
Yeah.
That would be dropped.
So we have a motion, do we have a second to that?
A second.
Ms. Camnitz has seconded that, and is there any further discussion on that motion?
Well.
Ms. Waters?
Are you, okay, discussion. I don't think you can, I don't think you can drop A, because I don't think that it says, I think you need the part that they are recommending for the candidate for the appointment. I think the appointment is, if you strike the whole thing, you've stricken the appointment.
What he was saying is strike the first portion, including the part that's already stricken, is that correct, and number one, is that what you're referring to?
In Paragraph Number One, to strike everything right up to the, just so Paragraph Number One would read?
No, I got that, I'm way down here in eight, I think the?
I thought you said A, I'm sorry.
Eight, eight. And so if you strike that whole thing, you're leaving out the part where the Board selects the candidate for appointment. You've set the standards by which they'll be interviewed and the method by which they'll be interviewed, but it should end with eight, that the Board actually recommends?
It should say, following the interviews, the full Board votes.
Okay, there you go.
Mr. Su, I think what she's referring to is in stating number eight, following the interviews, the Board Committee or the Board will deliberate and determine the candidate for the position. I mean, does that make it sound better?
We'll select.
We'll select.
We'll select the candidate.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that better?
Yes.
Which do you prefer, will name?
You can strike eight if you put that full Board appointment in seven, otherwise you need to leave eight.
Okay. That's reasonable. Any further questions or comments on that discussion? Ms. Counsel?
I had a question, so that then we'll proceed like we did last March with the Board all working together to make the decision, is that, that's what we're saying.
I think that was a good and open process last time, good transparency to the community. I think that we need to continue that practice.
And was that process, does this cover that process?
Yes.
So just so that you know what you're voting on, and so Madam Recorder knows what she's putting down in the minutes.
Yes.
Did you want to add something on to seven, or have a Paragraph Eight that says, following the interviews, the Board will deliberate and appoint?
I'd leave A then.
You need to say majority?
And we'll appoint a replacement Board member.
Yes.
Very good. And that motion was made by Mr. Forbes and seconded by Ms. Camnitz, do you have that, Ms. Pippin? All right. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Su, that will require a two-thirds majority vote in changing policy?
Well, it's unclear to me whether your appendixes are part of your rules of procedure, but it'd make my job easier if there was a two-thirds majority, and I didn't have to worry about it.
Okay. With that being said, is there any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Well, Mr. Su, you have a very easy job. Very good, thank you so much. In moving forward on this, I know we have received a good number of candidates, Dr. Emery has indicated we have received two. Is there a period of time for expiration on the advertisement?
Friday.
This Friday at 5:00 at the close of business. So any candidates out there that are listening this evening or that are present, please make sure to have your resume and information as requested in. They're turning that into the Office of Superintendent, and if they would have that in by 5:00, close of business on Friday, completed information as requested on the advertisement, and then we'll close that out for the Board to consider at our next meeting. We will have those packets put together with the candidates and for the Board to consider. Does the Board want to consider these in the hour prior to our Board meeting, in time to review and read through them, and then to have the candidates to appear at our next Board meeting? What's the pleasure of the Board on that?
As long as it's not at 5:00. I can't come, I can't be here till 6:00.
6:00, 30 minutes prior to the Board meeting, is that enough time for everyone to read through the resume packets?
Right.
Okay, so do we want to do that for the next Board meeting? I would like to move with some speed on this to?
We can send the resumes ahead.
Can you send them out, is what I was going to ask.
If Friday's the deadline, we can get them to you well in advance of the meeting.
And then we could have plenty of time to review them.
Okay, let's do that, and then we'll have the candidates, we can give them notice to appear at our next Board meeting, and we can proceed with that in terms of interviewing, time for the Board to discuss in open session, obviously, and then select that candidate so that we can make sure that Bishop Love's seat is filled with some speed. Any further questions or comment on that? All right. The next item on the agenda is comments by Superintendent. Dr. Emery?
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to Michael for another good audit and his staff at the Board's suggestion this year. You know, I'm taking one Friday a month and not visiting schools and spending that time in departments, and in January, that was the Finance Department, so I had an enjoyable day with them, and I know Michael does a great job for us, but he also has a really great department and folks who work to make us look good in audit and other times, so we appreciate your work. Also, thanks to Aaron and Jeff Hudson, Mike Whitford, and Russell Warren, who are here tonight. I think that we really appreciate the initiative of your department, Mike, and the work putting this together, and we know that it will play a role as we continue to look at safety efforts. Dr. Nolan and Mr. Bowyer are going to co-chair our internal task force, and they are getting ready to have their first meeting this Friday. We also were, we had a great meeting over a week ago with Chair Richard and Sheriff Elks, and our Chief of Police, Greenville Chief of Police, had someone step in for him, he was ill at the last minute. We're really pleased with the results that are already starting to happen for our schools as a result of that meeting, so we thank everyone for their commitment to that. School safety and security is a huge priority for us, and I think moving forward, as Mr. Forbes said, we have some creative financing opportunities available to us. We did commit to the city and the mayor that the $20,000 check you received tonight will also go towards future efforts for safety and security. We felt like? We felt like that was appropriate for that gift. I also want to say that we welcome, we said kind words about Heather, we welcome Marcia McLawhorn, who will stand in for a few weeks until we are able to find a permanent replacement. So, we look forward to working with you again, Marcia, and having you back in our district. And then, finally, we'd like to say thank you to all of you as a board, and individually for the prayers and cards and thoughts of sympathy and the recent loss in my family.
Thank you so much, Dr. Emery. I was very pleased tonight to see the presentation from Facility Services, that was an outstanding presentation, and really puts our school system in good footing in terms of safety and security, and ability to monitor situations, and heaven forbid, we have an incident that requires that, but it's nice to know that we have it if we need it available. So, Aaron, I appreciate your work, and with other staff members and their efforts in that. I did appreciate the comments tonight by the Assistant Superintendent in Human Resources in terms of the discussion that certainly needs to be had in our district in terms of looking at supplements and raising those. We do want to stay at the forefront in terms of competitiveness with our surrounding, and certainly with districts throughout North Carolina. We know that we have very strong teachers working in this district and so forth, but we want to make sure we have a competitiveness in terms of that. So, that is something, a good discussion that's needed in that area, and certainly thanks and congratulations to all the teachers working out there this week. I can never say that enough in terms of their strong efforts that they're doing with our students, and also, I was pleased to hear that we'll be focusing our security efforts on our youngest students in our district, the elementary schools, and looking at those areas to shore those up, that is certainly needed. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Peeding?
I've got no comments, everything seems to be smooth right now.
Glad to hear that. Ms. Camnitz?
I'm sorry we couldn't thank Mayor Thomas ourselves, but I do want to say a thank you to the C-Platoon of the Greenville Police Department, which announced that they were going to increase their presence in the elementary schools in the Greenville area with more walk-throughs, and I think presence when school begins and ends, and some time in the cafeteria with the kids, so we're very appreciative of that. And Christine and I were visiting G.R. Whitfield today, and while we were there, one of the sheriff's deputies dropped in, made just a walk around the campus, just sort of to have his presence be obvious to the kids and the teachers, and we understand that the sheriff's office is also increasing those kinds of drop-ins. So, it's nice to know that everyone is responding in this really positive way to make our children safer. And I would like to also thank Michael and his department for the glowing audit. I love the way he stands there and says, "Well, the board has done a really good job," when we all know that the good job occurs in the Finance Department, so thank you, Michael.
Ditto.
I have had the opportunity in the last week to visit seven schools. Some of that was for Teacher of the Year observations, and I was so impressed at everything I saw, the technology. If it weren't scary to me, would almost want me to go back to the classroom. And I was privileged to go to the Facility Command Center, and that was a good presentation, but that is an awesome setup. And then, as a personal comment, Mr. Kato, who won that ballgame?
Well, A.G. Cox Boys won, and we, our girls won against Hogue tonight.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mr. Forbes?
One thing that I would like to really put on the agenda in everyone's mind is to expand that Facility Command Center to those elementary schools. That needs to be a top priority for this system, real top priority, and we need to find the funds and make creative ways in finding those funds, and I'm sure, Michael, with a slam dunk, you can do it. Because you do a great job. And Heather, again, I'll miss you, and I've enjoyed working with you. Aaron, appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, and especially dealing with the sewer system, going to Chicot, and dealing with the company, and making sure that it's going smoothly. And all the teachers and staff, we, again, as a board, would like to thank you for all the hard work, and for you just getting up every day and coming to work, and serving the needs of the children.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Ms. Owens?
Ditto to all that has been said. In addition to that, I was told this weekend by someone who reads the Wall Street Journal that one of our board members was quoted in regard to cursive writing, and congratulations to that person, you never know what you say and where it will appear, so that's a good point in words. Last night, when I was about half asleep, I was watching the Super Bowl ads, and there was a great ad about farmers, and in the definition of farmers, they talked about the farmer doing this, that, and the other, it was absolutely beautiful. And it said that the farmers served on school boards, and I thought, well, that's a great thing, because it is valued anyway, so, most interesting.
I won't go and mention that, but since Barbara brought that up, that was in conjunction with the National FFA, and if you click that video, up to 1 million clicks will provide $1 million of resources to the National FFA Association. So, I appreciate, Barbara, you bringing that up. Also, I just want to wish Mary well, and hope that she will be back with us very, very soon. Again, I've had the opportunity to say my most respect to Bishop Ralph Love, but we definitely will, we will be missing him, because he is a man of his word, a man that believes in doing what he says he's going to do. You could count on him, but he did it in such a, just a very easy manner, that creates uniformity and unity and harmony. And I needed to say that, at the same time, I'm so glad, Mr. Chair, that you're moving our board forward very quickly to make that replacement, because those people in that particular district need their representation as well. We are going to be sorry to see Heather go, but Heather, I'm looking forward to working with you at North Carolina State, I said that before, but I got the opportunity to talk with the College of Ag and Life Sciences Foundation, and you definitely are going to be working in conjunction with them, so that's going to be very, very good, and look forward to working with you on that. And only the last thing I have to say, it's been an honor, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank you again for allowing me to continue as Chairman of the Finance Committee, because it's a real easy job, when you have someone like Michael Cowan and his staff that provide just excellent service to our students. And you can count on him, he's always on top of it. If you ever ask him a question, and he doesn't know, he'll find out very quickly and get back with you, I appreciate all of that. And just one last issue, and this is in reflection, Michael, we just need to make sure that we got those school field trips on our next agenda.
I was going to call you on that.
Okay.
Ms. Counsel?
Okay, I'd just like to say, tonight as we speak, the County Corporate Extension is having Achievement Night with kids throughout Pitt County, and that includes public school, home schools, charter, private, the whole works, and of course, I have a club, and I can't be there the night to see them receive their awards. I'm hoping to have a finish when I leave here, but we are excited about the work that Children has done in youth development here in Pitt County this past 2012, and they are being rewarded tonight for all of the different work that they have done throughout 2012. And I'm also accepting Benji applications for the North Carolina A&amp;T State University IFL Program Institute for Future Ag Leaders, and that will be coming up in June for a free week at N.C. A&amp;T and N.C. State. And so, when I recruit for A&amp;T, that's where my husband went to school. And also, in March, I will be working with my alumni group to help with the United Negro College Fund, which will be sending scholarship monies for students to attend Shaw University, which is our oldest institution of higher education in the private sector in the South. And so, that will be, program would be going on for that on March the 15th here in Greenville, and we'll let you know more about that later, so if any of you would like to contribute to help students attend college. And one concern I read this morning in the paper, I'm not sure I interpreted that right, but speaking of safety, in our schools, if my interpretation was correctly, the county commissioners mentioned that they were coming up with some type of referendum, or something to, to me, it sounded like not to support with the whole gun issue that's been talked about across the nation, so that sort of concerned me, and because it sounds like that we will, here in Pitt County, whatever happens with guns and weapons and that type thing, that we will not accept executive orders and all of that, so that was, sort of caught my attention today, if you all read that in the paper, because it's based on what we've said tonight about our schools, are we not going to be in conflict with what's happening? And it's almost like we're fighting locally to block things before it even gets worked on nationally, and I realize that politics is what it is, but I think that we really need to be careful in terms of how we do this business, because it may be that we might be, what's the old saying, Benji, help me out, that sometime you dig a hole for someone else, you may fall in yourself?
Well...
That's the best way I could put it, so I just think that, as citizens here in Pitt County, I'm speaking not on behalf of the board, but I just have concerns that the language, to me, was very strong today with what's being sounded like proposed, so you all helped me to figure that one out. But I think we really, really need to be processing all these things we're hearing, and what we're doing here to try to protect our children here in Pitt County and around the country, and to come up with that type language is troubling to me. And I've also heard it in the community, since I've seen it in the paper today, so maybe we're not on the same page, I'm not sure, but it does concern me.
Thank you, Ms. Counsel.
So, think about that.
Mr. Forbes, if you would...
I moved that we go into closed session to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under FERPA 20 U.S.C. 1232G of the Regulation of Laws of the United States, NCGS 143-318. 11A1, and establish or instruct the staff or agent concerned the negotiation of the amount of compensation or other terms of an employment contract, NCGS 143-318.11A5.
And before the motion is made on that, Mr. Su, are there any clarifying points to that closed session?
May I ask that to consult with the attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, and to consider confidential personnel information also be added to that motion?
Yes. Now, which section is that, so that Mr. Forbes can read that?
Well, it would be the section that began to consult with our attorney...
Yes.
...to protect the attorney-client privilege, and then, if one immediately below established instruct the staff, we can consider the qualifications, etc., of a public officer or employee.
Consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, and...
Do you have that in your agenda booklet, number 40, it's page 43?
Yes.
What was the next item?
Discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business in the...
Consider the...
...one on 43, that said, consider the qualifications, competence, performance conditions of appointment of a public officer, officer, or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or hear, or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer or employee, NCGS 143-318.11A6.
You had made that motion, Mr. Forbes, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. It is unanimous that we'll go into closed session at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess, so that individuals in the auditorium can clear out in five minutes, we will return to this location.